Thank you.
All right, we are live. It looks like we have folks coming in this morning, so we'll just give them a few seconds to get everybody in the room before we get going. There's some folks on the phone.
There's Griselda.
Yes, she was in the waiting room for some reason, yep.
Oh, we'll promote her, right?
Yeah, I got her promoted.
You just give me the signal when you think it's time.
I think people have, I think we're probably good to go, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Good morning, Griselda. Good morning, folks. My name is John Kafalas, Laramie County Commissioner, District One. This is our monthly community conversation. As you know by now, we've, in light of the COVID-19 situation, we've, everything is virtual for the most part, although we did have one in-person meeting back in, back in August at the T-Bar Inn, which was nice to be able to do that outside. We've combined the Waverly Buckeye meetings with the Wellington meetings, so hopefully the word is getting out that this is intended to reach the folks in rural areas in Wellington and northern, northern Laramie County. As in the past, we'll turn it over to Michelle, our Public Affairs Director, in a moment, who can explain a little bit about how this works. And then we have, our featured guests are really nice and cool and competent. Clerk and Recorder Angela Myers will give us an update on the, on how Laramie County is preparing for the elections and the ballots. And then we have Lou Perez, our interim director from the Solid Waste Department, and a new person, Griselda, still, who is our communications person there. And the main, the main program today, of course, is to get an update on the landfill stuff and, and answer questions of people. And, and just one last thing, I'll remind folks that the reason, the main reason we're doing, we have the Lou and Griselda here is because at previous meetings, folks indicated that this was an important topic, especially with the proposed landfill, you know, on County Road Nine and Alcany Road there. So that's why, hopefully before we close today, if folks have suggestions for future topics, the next time we meet, God willing, will be November 5th, and I believe that's after the election. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of things on people's minds at that point, and then we kind of keep going into the future. So thank you, thank you very much for being here, taking the time, time is precious, and I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Morning, everybody. My name is Michelle Byrd, as Commissioner Kafalas said, and I am the Public Affairs Director for Laramie County. This morning, I'm gonna be your Zoom host, so really that means I'm somewhat of a facilitator and, and an IT support. So I just want to explain a little bit how you guys can participate this morning if you haven't joined us before. And if you haven't joined us before, you'll probably notice we're in a little bit of a different format. This is called Zoom webinar, which is different than probably what you're used to, which is a Zoom meeting. You'll notice that the big thing about Zoom webinar that you'll notice is that is different, well, there's two things really. One, that you can't chat to us, right? So there is no, no chat feature, and the second one is that you only see us and we don't see you. And there's a pretty good reason for that. It's really all-around safety, safety for you guys primarily. The chat feature would allow anybody to come in here, as you know, we keep these meetings open, so anyone can register and come on in. And we don't necessarily know who that is, and we do have a concern that anyone could come in, send a link that would maybe put a virus on your computer, send you to a page you don't want to go to. Same thing with a camera. We don't know what people are doing with their cameras, we don't want to see anything bad. So that's why we use Zoom webinar, but that doesn't mean you guys can't participate, we have lots of different ways you can participate today. The first one is you'll notice, instead of a chat button, you'll have a Q and A button. That's where you guys, you can use that as your chat, and that's where you can ask questions to us. If you don't want to ask them verbally, you can type them into the Q and A. Another thing you can do with a Q and A, I know a lot of people like to just kind of have a running commentary. They don't necessarily always have questions for our presenters, but they have comments they want to make. Go ahead and use that Q and A function that way as well, and I'll make those comments live. Really what I'm vetting for is a link that's gonna put a virus, so everything else I make live. So please go ahead and use that Q and A function, just like you would use any kind of chat function. If you don't want to type in your questions or your comments, you can use the raise hand feature. That just lets me know that you want to talk to us, and then I'll walk you through those steps of when it's your turn, I'll let you know it's your turn, and I'll walk you through how to unmute yourself. Finally, for those of us who have called in, and I don't mean using Zoom, the Zoom app on your phone, I mean the people that actually dialed the number and called in. Of course, you don't have that Q and A or that, that raise hand button. So what you want to do is you want to press, sorry, I lost my cheat sheet, you want to press star nine, and that'll indicate to me that you want to talk, and then I can go through and walk you through the steps to talk to us. So I think that is all I have. Commissioner?
Thank you, thanks, Michelle. I also just wanted to do a shout out there. I noticed two of the attendees were Wellington Town Board members, so welcome to Tim and Rebecca, thank you for participating. And with that said, I'd like to turn it over to our Laramie County Clerk and Recorder.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Michelle, for all the great information. As always, welcome, Lou. How exciting, and Griselda as well. The work you do is so important, and I'm delighted to see it highlighted this morning. I'm here to talk about elections, and as if any of you have seen me talk before, what I really care about is what you care about. So I want to know what your questions are. I can fill space, and I will, but I'm delighted if you would ask me your pressing questions. I won't be back with you in a meeting, Clerk Kafalas said, it will be after Election Day. Please know, in the interim, I work for you. So you got a question, you call me directly, my desk number, 970-498-7852. I am responsive, and I care about what you, answering any questions you may have. It's a pretty noisy election season out there right now, which is pretty normal for us. Every election season gets noisy, this one a little more than typical, but you know, that's, this is what we do. For us, you know, elections and politics is pretty emotional. For us here, though, administering the election, no emotion in this, we're just following the processes as we've had them in place for many, many years. You hear a lot of noise out in the world about mail balloting. We've done mail balloting here in Colorado and Laramie County since November of 2013. Folks, we've got this process down, okay? I think a lot of the noise you're hearing about is what occurs in other states, or potentially could occur in other states if they adopt mail balloting here at the last minute. So please know, I think, you should, I know, you should be very confident and comfortable with how we operate elections here in Laramie County and in Colorado. Ballots are gonna go out the week of October 12th. I say that, you've heard the date, October 9th as well. That is the day they're gonna hit the general mail facility in Denver. However, every ballot in the state's gonna go out same time, so it's gonna take a little while. So I like to create a reasonable expectation for voters. Ballots are gonna arrive in your box the week of October 12th. If you don't get it by October the 21st, call us. 970-498-7820 is the Elections Office, and they will check on the status of your ballot. You can also check the status of your ballot by, if you've given us an email address with your voter registration, you are automatically this year hooked up with Vote Ballot Tracks through the Secretary of State's office. So you're gonna be getting a notice, or you should have already gotten a notice, talking about the fact that Ballot Tracks is operational this year. It is an opt-out service. And so unless you opt out, you're gonna get information from your, to your email about the status of your ballot. It'll tell you when your ballot goes out, it'll tell you when you receive your ballot. We receive your ballot, and it'll tell you when we accept your ballot. So we've always had in play in Laramie County, if you go to votelaramie.org and just hit Track My Ballot, you can certainly track your ballot that way, especially if you've not already provided us with an email address. Michelle, do I have a chat question? No?
Nope, I'm just putting in, oh, here, one just jumped up, so. Hi, Clerk Myers, I'm wondering how to confirm that I am registered to vote by absentee ballot?
You know, absentee in Colorado is kind of a misnomer. Everybody gets a ballot in the mail, because we're an all-mail ballot state. For us, really, an absentee is for folks who maybe are traveling during this window of time when ballots are going out. Perhaps you're a snowbird and you're heading for Florida or somewhere else. You, that would be an instance where you would need to let us know you want the ballot delivered to wherever it is you're going, because you won't be here during any of the window of time when the ballot's in play. And for that, you need to go to votelaramie.org, update my registration, let us know where you'd like that mailed to. Or you can call our office, 970-498-7820, they will help you as well. Otherwise, no contact necessary, you're gonna get your ballot in the mail. And I ask all voters, please, 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 no matter what you're hearing out of the news, because, out of the noise, because, you know, as I said, really, the issues they're talking about are associated with other places that aren't familiar with mail balloting and haven't done it regularly, certainly for as long as we have. But when you get your mail ballot, please just snag it out of that box, take it right to your kitchen table, and vote that ballot, and get it right back out on the mailbox the next day. You've heard a lot of noise about the postal system, and, you know, I am completely comfortable with the postal system. I think those postal workers do an exceptional job. They handle billions of pieces of mail every day, and their, their success rate's pretty amazing. But if you don't feel comfortable with that, there are 18 24-hour drop boxes available to you. That information on where those are located is on the instructions that come with your ballot. These are the 18 located here. I'm also in the process of adding a few more here at the last minute, which I will do a big announcement about if and when I get them in, in time to announce that. I don't want to say anything about where they're located until I'm certain that they're in and ready to be in play, because I don't want to cause any voter confusion. Now, when you vote that ballot, please remove the, you know, this is fabulous right here. Anybody see this beautiful, well, you guys, maybe you can all see, I'm not sure, some of you may be joining over the phone. There's a wonderful orange stub on the top of your ballot. This stuff actually tells you which, it says, "I voted in the November 2020 general election." And it is a true keepsake for you, forego the need for one of those nasty "I voted" stickers, it's gonna get all sticky on your clothing in the dryer, and instead, tear this stub off, tape it or pin it to your clothing. I know it's, it makes a great statement, right? Even a bigger statement than that "I voted" sticker. And I want folks to get used to using this and keeping it as a keepsake, because in order to get an "I voted" sticker doggone it, you gotta be, see somebody in person. And, and right now, in these interesting times, we want to keep folks socially distanced, and mail balloting is one of the best ways we can do that. And there just isn't any reason to vote, to see anybody in person. You can drop your ballot yourself in a ballot box. If you got issues and you think that you need to go into a voter service and polling center, please call us first, 970-498-7820. We'll see if there's another solution for you that doesn't involve in-person contact. Please know, we are prepared for in-person contact. We have consulted with the Health Department regarding all of our setups, our barriers that we've created, our cleaning protocols and those kind of things. And I'm proud to say, very blessed to be able to say that we've had no indication of any election judges who have contracted COVID during the June primary when we were under these protocols. And I'm also very blessed to say I've not had a single staff member during this entire time, and we've never stopped serving the public, who has contracted COVID. So what we're doing is, makes a lot of sense and is working out well for the results we're seeing. Another reason to vote early, I'll be right with you, just a half second, John. Another reason to vote early is that if you have an issue with your ballot, perhaps you mess it up, you know, I'm, you know, I'm the king of mark the wrong one, if I, or the queen of that, if I, if I get in a hurry. And if you wait till the last minute, now you gotta see somebody to get a new ballot, if it's too late to mail one out. So another great reason to vote early. Yes, John?
Thank you, Angela. If I may, just a couple of quick questions. Number one, where is the 24-hour secure ballot box located in Wellington? Number two, if I may, regarding military personnel and overseas folks, how does that work in terms of receiving their ballots and how much time they have to get those, you know, returned to you by deadlines? So those are two questions right there.
Thank you, John. You bet. Overseas voters, we call those UACVA voters. There are military, there are folks who are working overseas. Their ballots actually go out to them in late September, so 24th-ish of September, so they've had their ballots for a while. And, and they have special protocols for returning those that create convenience for them in very, very unique situations many times. So those folks have already gotten their ballots. That's an important part of our process. Wellington Public Library is listed here on the instructions on the top of the third column there for drop boxes. It is located at the Wellington Public Library, and that's at 3800 Wilson Avenue in Wellington. We also have a voting site in Wellington, as has been the case for many years. I'm trying to pick it out of the group here real quickly, I'm not terribly quick, Riverlife Fellowship. But again, and they are an Election Day-only site, again, please don't go in unless you don't have any other option. Call us first and see if there is another, another option, so that we can minimize in-person contact as much as possible.
My last question, Angela, regarding voter registration, is it correct that, I received a call from someone who was wondering about a young person that was living with her, you know, as a caretaker, and wanting to know what is the best way to make sure that that person was properly registered at that address? And I directed them to the votelaramie.org. Is that correct? And is there anything else you wish to add to that, other than, you know, to make a phone call? But how can people ensure that they're properly registered, and up to what point?
You know, you got it, John, you heard me talk about this enough already, right? Go to votelaramie.org, hit the, check my registration. You won't click it at the state site, but I try to help people remember that anything they need to know about elections here in Laramie County is at votelaramie.org. You don't have to remember a state side and our side and, and this other group, remember votelaramie.org. We will connect you to the state if it's necessary to do what you are trying to accomplish. You're gonna hit, check my registration, I ask all voters to do that now. Please remember that if you are or you know someone who is 17 and gonna be 18 by Election Day, please remind them, they can register and vote, and they need to do that now. I mean, they need to get registered now, and, and vote when their mail ballot comes. And if they register now, they're gonna get that ballot in the mail like everyone else. And that's what we're trying to accomplish by requesting folks to check their registration and, and get registered early. Because again, that gets your ballot to you in the mail and, and keeps, again, down that social, I mean, that in-person contact. Okay, I'm not sure how much time I have, raise your hand and slow me down if you want to, but a couple other things I'd like to talk about that you're hearing out in the, in the noise right now is there has been some talk about the color of your return envelope, perhaps having some, indicating somehow what your party affiliation is. That's a misnomer, that, any colors you might see in most ballots are gonna be white with the red and gray writing on it. But if you, if you see a ballot envelope that's a different color, it typically means that person is required to return an ID with their ballot. Perhaps they're one of those overseas voter ballots. And the reason we color code them is because when we receive them, we want to be able to treat them differently when we receive them, because we have to check and make sure that ID is there. And those UACVA voters have to have special treatment as well. So it's important that everybody know, no party affiliation on here. Also, I've heard folks talk about any letters that might be associated in this area that might potentially indicate a party affiliation. There is no such thing on these envelopes. Any letters or numbers you see here have to do with the printer getting the right ballot envelope and the right ballot in the right envelope for the right voter. Michelle votes on a different ballot than I do, than John does, than Lou does. And so there's a bit of logistics involved in that. As well, they might also involve getting that ballot to us from the postal service. We've talked about the postal service a little bit earlier. You know, we work hand in glove with them. I have understood directly from them that it is business as usual in Colorado. We've got this down. We've been doing this since 2013. So, and remember, 2013 was not a gubernatorial year, and it was not a presidential year. We had an evolution of getting here and have had a chance to vet our voter registration lists and keep them up to date very carefully, and, you know, we got this process down. Please don't do anything unique this year that you wouldn't have done in other years. I also always say, never, ever, ever, ever give your ballot to someone else, because that other person, they may have the best of intentions, but their importance of your ballot is not the same as your importance of your ballot. So give your ballot the security it needs. When we talk about the security and fraud-related concerns with respect to mail balloting, that security of that ballot is in most jeopardy when it is in the hands of the voters. The way you care for that ballot is directly correlates with the security of that ballot. Don't share it with anyone else, don't give it to anyone else to drop for you, there are too many great other alternatives. And, you know, sometimes those ballots don't make it to us when they are given to someone else. As well, I don't know how much time I have, you may, you're looking a little antsy on me here. I want to, if, if you don't think of any, remember, anything else I've told you, please, 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 do not get your information from social media. Use social media to share information about your family, to celebrate events, but don't use it to get your best information regarding election process, okay? If you've got questions about election process, you hear somebody say there's an issue with a ballot or some kind of mailing issue or whatever, you contact me first, 970-498-7852 is my direct line number. And I'm welcome, you know, if we got an issue, we want to know about it right away. We may be able to then solicit your help in getting the word out on social media to alert people that we do have an issue. But otherwise, 99.9% of what I see on social media regarding the election processes is inaccurate. Folks who are confused about the process won't vote, doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on, let's don't let that happen. Anything, I'm gonna take a breath, and anything else you want me to cover, John?
I wonder, I guess one last, this will definitely be my last question, and I know we want to give adequate time for our folks from the Solid Waste work. There's been, quote, "noise" about election judges. What's the status of, of having adequate number of nonpartisan election judges? Well, I mean, they have affiliations, but their job there is to do their job. Could you speak to that? Are we, do we still need people, or do we have adequate number of election judges to further ensure the integrity of this election?
You know, John, I appreciate you asking the question, and there is no such thing as a nonpartisan election judge, I'm here to tell you. Because, but, we do everything in bipartisan teams as much as we're allowed to by law. And so, you know, those folks know, and John, I think you're touching on something very important, without fail. You know, if I get somebody who, and I get some curmudgeons once in a while, who say, "Oh, you can't be doing this," or "Oh, the system's got a problem." And my first response is, "Come be an election judge." Because you get to see right on the, in, right in firsthand knowledge of how it works. And I have yet to have a single election judge, even the most skeptical who've come in, not say, "Wow, this is amazing." It is, first of all, amazing that folks of differing political persuasions work so well together. It's really a beautiful thing. The folks who come as election judges know that there is something much more important than your political persuasion, and that is the integrity, as you said, John, of the election. And it is such a beautiful thing to see. It, I don't, it really is very heartwarming. And I'm also, never yet have any of those judges walk away saying anything other than, "Oh my goodness, there's no way to game this system or to commit fraud in this system, it is so tight." And so I encourage everyone to consider being an election judge. We actually think we probably have enough folks in the queue to keep contacting to become election judges, but that doesn't matter. I still encourage everyone, please consider signing up to be an election judge. If we need you, we'll call you. And certainly, it's something to consider, something you will never be sorry you did. It is really an amazing, amazing experience, and the election is conducted by citizens. Election processes are bottom-up processes, and that's the way it should be. And I have a staff of 14 people, I'm gonna hire 600 to 700 to do this election. So the election is not conducted by my staff, it's conducted by you, the citizen. My staff makes sure that the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and we are sticklers. But the election is actually conducted by citizens. So go to votelaramie.org to sign up to be an election judge. Looks like I got two questions there. Are they, are they anything for me before I?
Lou, I think-- Unmuted, yeah. So the first one, Rebecca just wanted to say she served as an election judge, and it was an amazing experience.
Rebecca?
And then Mary Ellen says, "I submitted an application to be an election judge and was given access to the website. I have not yet been advised or given any indication I will be needed. I imagine there is training. Will I be called?"
You know, I don't know. I don't get in the, I don't micromanage my folks, but I will tell you that they are still filling spots. And yes, there is training. And every Saturday going forward, we will be training election judges for the process. They, election judges are very specialized in what they, what they each do, because the training is so limited. So be patient. If you want to check on it, and call the office, 970-498-7820. But we probably won't call everyone who has signed up, because as I say, we got quite a glut this time. But, you know, if you want to check on it, you're welcome to do that, and I'm so honored that you have signed up. And Rebecca, thank you for your service, and I love, you know, election judges become ambassadors for the process, and that's a beautiful thing. Before I go, Lou, I think you're new in the area, right? Am I not mistaken?
I am, I am. I just recently moved here about a year ago from Denver.
Okay, so you're, you've been in Colorado long enough, and you're registered to vote, so you're good to go. No questions regarding--
Oh, yeah.
--new residents, so, okay. Thank you. I will hang on a little bit in case there are other questions come up, and always, call me, call me, call me with any questions you got. We work for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela, and Bea, thank you very much. It's very helpful. And before we turn it over to Lou and Griselda, I also want to acknowledge that a third Wellington Town trustee, John Gator, excuse me, is also participating, and I just want to extend a welcome to, to John. With that, Lou, you and Griselda are on.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, everyone, for allowing us the opportunity to come and explore a conversation. We're here for you. Griselda and I are taking this opportunity to bring about information regarding our project. This is very important to us, as well as the Wellington community, as well as to all of Laramie County. So we're really here to serve and to help and to address questions. Griselda has put together a little presentation that will address some topicality as well as updates. We're gonna go through that presentation. This is very open, so we will entertain questions, of course. We do also have a question and answer sheet that we've put together. Griselda has put a lot of this together herself. She's been feeling questions from some past meetings that we've had, and also from the public, as well as what is happening with our project. And she's also gonna talk a little bit more, I'll introduce Griselda right now. Griselda is our new communications specialist to the Solid Waste Department. I remember when I joined this team about a year ago, one of the first things that I've heard from several folks, in addition to some of the meetings we were in, is that we need to do a better job communicating. Information was not getting out there, misinformation was getting out there. I've heard a lot of feedback from folks saying, you know, "This department could do a little better job of communicating information to Wellington as well as to Laramie County community." Well, we've listened. We went ahead and brought in a specialist to help our department with the projects. This department is involved with several projects. Not only are we siding and building a landfill, we will be breaking ground at the end of the year, 1st of January, on our new transfer station. We are co-constraining on that site with the transfer station, a behavioral health facility. So we have some exciting things happening on our site that's gonna kick off in the next several months. A groundbreaking ceremony will take place on January, I'm sorry, December 16th, 40s, two events, so I just want to throw that out there. In addition to that, we're also in the process of developing a compost project as well. We were citing to build a compost project in June of next year, 2021, but that project has received a delay. But we're still going forward with that project. So I just wanted to give you a little brief, in addition to the other projects that we're doing with the landfill, we have a lot of activity within the Solid Waste Department. We're pressing forward with a lot of development. We're gonna be adding on new staff, and our goal is really to develop these projects and also make them extremely viable for the Laramie County community. And our goal is really to develop these projects and also make them extremely viable for the Laramie County community. I want to introduce Griselda Stills. Griselda has a master's in communications and she comes to us with a lot of experience, a lot of know-how. Our specialty has been also in developing outreach. And we're going to talk a little bit more about what that means. Outreach and an outreach program, engaging the community and being that portal where we could receive and develop information. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Griselda. She's going to start us off with a little presentation and her and I will tag team. Griselda, feel free to add anything about yourself that I might have left behind that you think is important. But please go ahead and start the presentation.
Well, good morning, everyone. So first of all, I just wanted to say that part of me coming on to the team and helping with communications and community outreach, I think, means different things to different people. And I just want to clarify that what it means to me as a community specialist is to definitely be able to help the community voice their concerns and help us address some of those. And that's the most important thing. So yes, we will convey information and updates and, and all of those things and try to create better communication. But the main role that I have with the community is trying to be that liaison. So trying to communicate your concerns to the county officials, to our directors, and, and try to get some of these things resolved. Now, my heart, I wish I could resolve every concern out there. We know that's not always a possibility. We are working for an entire county and to please everyone is impossible. Some people will be more affected than others. We know that with different things, more traffic near them or whatever the, the situation might be. But we do want to mitigate some of that and we want to be able to help our community members have a better experience. So I also know that because there was nobody in this position before me, some of that communication got dropped. And a little bit of that trust got dropped. And now we have to kind of rebuild these relationships and be able to rebuild that bridge and say, you know, we are here for you. So one of the things that we are trying to do is just assure you that we are communicating your needs and your concerns as well as your suggestions to our county officials. And I think this meeting today is proof that our commissioners care about what you think and what you need. So keep voicing those. The Q and A form that I put together is for that reason. So I don't lose any of those suggestions and concerns and, and questions and answers. But it's also to clear up some miscommunication that's been out there. As you know, it was mentioned before, social media is our worst enemy with a lot of these things. And, and people have great ideas and great suggestions. And sometimes there are things that are posted that, that don't make sense for our county or don't work or are misinformation. And so same thing for us, just call me directly. I will figure out who to ask, get you the correct answer in a timely manner. And obviously, if there are concerns, be able to pass those along as well. So with that being said, we want this to start developing into a community relations two-way communication street where you're able to voice those concerns. We're early in the development stages where we can hopefully adapt some things and we have, which I'm very proud of my department for that. And we'll talk a little bit about some of those things and we're still listening. And I think that that is one of the beauties of having this relationship start right now. So I want to encourage you with that. I want to know that you, let you know that you're being heard. Again, not everything will be able to be resolved maybe in the way that you specifically want it, but maybe you will provide an awesome suggestion for us as well. So with all that being said, I would like to be able to have your emails. So if you are not okay with that, just let us know somewhere. But if you are okay with it, Michelle can share those with me. And then we can start a database and start building our community group update forms. So I can send out information. You can reach me directly. So those are some ways. I have started a Facebook North Landfill page as well. So right now it's, should be circulating in ads in your area, but look for it. It's facebook.com LC North Landfill. So you can reach me that way too. You can message me there. You can see what others are posting. I'm trying to respond with, you know, some of those, those answers in the Q and A forms as well. So just kind of clearing up misconceptions there. What else? So email, phone. My direct line is the nine seven zero four nine eight five seven seven six. And the email is gstill@larama.org. So I just want to be sure that you have all the ways to reach me that you can. And I will be that liaison for you and I want to be that voice for you. So that being said, I can't resolve your issues. I wish I could, but I can definitely pass them off. And I think that's where Lou is at as well as the interim director. And as we're looking to hire a new director soon, that's also a priority for us is to make sure that they are community driven and that they are going to be responding to our community needs as well. So I don't see any Q and As. I'm going to go ahead and just hand this over back to Lou for the updates. And I will go ahead and share my screen with this presentation. And then I think at the end of this brief presentation, we're going to just open it up and see what other questions that you might have, other concerns, other suggestions for us.
Great, thank you, Griselda. So if you could, you've got the helm on the presentation. So if you could put up a couple of slides, share your screen. We will start sharing some information with some updates on our project. First one is, I just want to give a little background to everyone. Some people have asked, what kind of research have we done? What kind of investigations have we done? An environmental impact study relative to the landfill? No, we haven't done a direct environmental impact study that wasn't required. But we've done a lot of environmental analysis and review. This is part of the state requirement for any landfill sighting. We've looked at the wetlands capability, airport zoning, seismic impact, undisturbed conditions, floodplains. These are all typically part of a typical environmental impact study. But we have done a lot of this due diligence prior to even developing the site. This has been going on in the background for the last several years. Once we've done the environmental impact review and analysis to see how the conditions play out with our landfill, we then start going into our permits. Now, there are two permits associated with our landfill. The first one is called the environment, EDOP, Engineering Design and Operating Plan. This is a state regulatory compliance that we have to heave to. It's actually an application, a very big, long-winded application. The state of Colorado actually regulates all the landfills here in Colorado. And we have to apply for an application and follow all the criterias associated with a landfill regulation, not only the local state regulations, but also the federal. There's this big federal regulation called subtitle D, part of the ICA certification that's due to give guidelines as far as what all the landfills need to do to operate. So we're following federal and also state requirements. That is part of our EDOP. That is the big application. We've just submitted that application. We're in the process of review process with the state of Colorado. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDHPE, is our regulator. They have received our application. We are actually in the process of a commentary. They've given us some comments. We're going to be responding to the comments. This process takes anywhere from eight months to ten months. It can even take a year with comments back and forth. Once we are able, we're successful to achieve our EDOP and we receive that, the next thing we need is called our certificate of designation, our CD. Now, this is a local permit that's actually issued by Laramie County. So this is more of a local regulatory permit to make sure that we're meeting all the guidelines associated with the county's regulations. Are we meeting all the land use compliance components? Are we meeting all the statutes associated with public health? These are all the things that are part of a CD process. And this will be our next step once a EDOP is in place. So I just wanted to give a little background. Some people have asked, how are you being regulated? What is the process? Who is involved in overseeing how this takes place? So the first one is the EDOP, which is, again, that's regulated by the state of Colorado and they also follow federal guidelines. And the next one is the CD, the certificate of designation. And that is a regulatory compliance permit that we have to receive by the county in order to use this property. Next slide, please.
Hey Lou, before you move on, can you tell us exactly where we are? I think some people have been asking, is this a for sure thing? Is our site selected? Are we ready to roll? Are we ready to break ground on this place? Or is there still?
Sure, thank you. That's actually an excellent question. And yeah, please feel free, Griselda, chime in. If you see any questions that you think are very pertinent and people have asked you in the past, let's talk about it. So the site is the site. We have done a lot of development work already. We haven't broken ground on anything, but we have over thirty monitoring wells. These are groundwater monitoring wells on site. We've done a lot of analysis on the soil, on the sort of the geology of the site to make sure that it is a site that's conducive for landfill application. We've also done a lot of ground monitor analysis. And the first thing that we have to figure out is where's the groundwater? Because that tells us how deep we could go with the landfill. So we've done a lot of this work already. And there's another map, and I don't have that with me, but it shows you all throughout the site, we have all kinds of wells in place for monitoring. And we also have to take analysis on a regular basis. So part of our requirement is we have to start analyzing the groundwater. As the groundwater starts to flow into the site, it actually comes from the north and flows its way north to southeast. And that's, that's kind of the ebb and flow of the groundwater. And it's at different depths because of all the shale that's in there. So we have to monitor that and, and run sort of baseline analysis of what the inbound groundwater is. And we also have wells on the perimeter of the landfill that will monitor the groundwater as it's leaving the site. And the premise is to make sure that we are not adding any contamination to the groundwater. And I'll talk a little bit about some of those measures of what a typical landfill uses to protect the groundwater. But that is one of the big things that we have. So as far as the site, we're actually in the process of putting up new signs. I, I believe that was one of the suggestions that was given to us. The signs that have been there right now are very old and kind of out of date. Probably in the next few months, we're going to be putting out some new signs. But the site, you know, is going to be that development. That is the site that we have already put in as our permit. So there is, at the moment, there is no alternative site for us. So let me give you a little background on the site plan. Some, some people have asked, well, how is this going to take place? How is the landfill actually going to develop? Some people think, well, you're going to dig this great big hole. There's going to be huge, huge hole out there. And that's not necessarily true. The way landfills are developed, they're in, in sections and they're called cells. And we're starting here on the northwest corner of the property. As you can see, the property has this big division line and that's a power line. It just runs kind of in a triangular form right through the property. So our plan is to start here on the northwest corner of the property. And this is the first cell that you see. And basically, we come in, we dig up the area, probably an equivalent of about twenty acres or eighteen acres. It's not terribly huge, but this will be the first development. Once we dig up the cell, we line the cell. The cell has an HDPE liner. It's a synthetic liner that goes over the whole area. So as we put waste in, if we get any kind of leachate, the liner, it's, it's just like a tarp. It's just a very heavy duty tarp that's welded together. It allows for the capture of leachate. The leachate, which is the water that runs through all the solid waste, is actually captured. There are drains and pumps on the bottom that actually pump that back up. We capture that leachate and it's going to go into holding tanks. And our plan is, we could do one of two things. We could either take that leachate off-site and treat it as contaminated water. Or we could recirculate that leachate back into the landfill, meaning that we will just use it for dust control. The leachate that is generated is very little. It's not a lot. It's, it's a very small amount, actually, depending on the, you know, the size of the cell. But that's a very common practice in landfills. Once you capture some of the leachate water, you actually reuse it. You keep it on-site and you use that for dust control because landfill uses a lot of water on a regular basis. So the first cell structure is going to be here on the northwest corner. And our plan is to continue developing from the northwest. And I don't know if you have the next cell, the next one, Griselda, that you show the other cells on your next slide? Do you have those other? Oh, no, you don't. I'm sorry, yeah. Sorry, we had another one that I, I left out. So the cells are start here and then the next one will be just south of there. And then they continue on and then develop. You could see the little squares in this picture and each of them represent a cell. So we start from the north and we work our way south. By the time we get to the middle here of this first area, right by the time we get to this middle, we will have in the equivalent of three to four cells already developed. And that'll be in twenty-five years. This landfill has two units, unit one and unit two. The first unit is the larger one here to the left. The second one is on the other side of the power lines on the northeast corner of the property. Our plan is to first develop the unit to the left. That has a seventy-five year holding capacity. And the one to the right has a twenty-five year holding capacity. So our goal is really to do one at a time. It makes sense instead of just continually being all over the map. And as we get to the middle of the property here, it'll be about twenty-five years around, depending on how fast we fill it up, before we get to any other areas. The other thing that we're planning to do that a lot of people ask is how are you going to handle litter control? Well, litter control is a series of fences and a lot of practices that we have. We will have very large fences, something in the neighborhood of about forty feet. We first started off here, right around the, because unit one, right around the fifty yard line, for lack of a better word, right in the middle of the cell, we're planning to put that large fence. And that'll be one barrier. The other barriers that we put is we use smaller fences around the actual cell. So as we're developing the cell, we have a series of smaller fences around the perimeter of the cell to capture any potential trash that could be flying around. We're well aware that there's very high winds in that area. We know there's, there's actually a weather station there that will help us to monitor winds. And we are actually tapped into that already. And we'll be able to monitor winds, but we have a very robust plan to capture with fencing, internal fencing and large fencing in order to capture any potential debris that could get airborne and fly around. The other thing that we do is at the end of the day, it's part of the regulations, our landfill's material has to be covered. And that means it's covered with dirt. So as we're. So as we're filling up the smaller areas within the cell, we are packing it down with dirt. And as we're doing that, we're also preventing debris from flying around. It also mitigates odors. It is part of a control process within the cell and within the landfill development. So the key things within the structure of the landfill is we're starting here on the northwest corner. We are using leachate. We are using ground monitoring collection systems to capture any potential water that filters through the landfill. We are daily covering the landfill with dirt to prevent material from flying around and odors. We're going to have a robust fencing system in place, both interior and around the perimeter of the landfill. We will also have a litter vac, a very large piece of equipment that goes around on a daily basis to actually pull any waste that flies around. And all these tools that I'm talking about, we're actually using in our current landfill. And one of the things I like to bring out at some point in time, if anybody wants to come and tour our existing landfill and look at the practices that we're utilizing. We understand that the practice that we have here is going to be a little different up there. But we are using some of the state's most best practices in the industry right now, forty's preventive measures. A lot of this technology that we're using has been used by other landfills here in Colorado, Front Range landfill, as well as landfills out in Golden to get seventy, eighty mile an hour winds. These are common practices that are used for these areas. And in fact, our landfill manager, Jeremy Groves, operated that one landfill in Golden for many years. So he's well aware of the establishments that are in place and dealing with a landfill that has a high wind and aggressive wind coming in on a consistent basis. So we're used to these practices. We have experienced people onboard already in the management of operations. And we're taking all the necessary precautions that we feel will help mitigate any contamination. Or we understand that the wind practices could be brutal out there, and we realize that. And one question that was asked, several people asked, it says, well, what do you do on windy days? Well, we shut down. If the winds blow sustainably for over forty miles an hour, and that is over a course of an hour, we will shut down the landfill. We will not operate in those high wind situations. And what does that mean? Does that mean that trucks are still coming in? No, we actually will be running the transfer station at our current site. And the trucks that are transporting up will stop coming. So there won't be trucks on the road. There won't be material coming in. Operations will cease. They will, they will just put dirt on top of what's already there, what's in place. And this is how we'll mitigate some of these problems and situations. Commissioner, did you have a question? I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand go up, but feel free to interrupt me.
Yes, thank you, Lou. I, I, I don't have a question, but there are at least three questions in the Q and A. And I would like you and Griselda to respond directly to those questions. And, and that might help facilitate the, further the discussion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Michelle, please feel free to interrupt me with questions.
So I have, there's several questions, so let's just jump into the first one. Is the public comment period for CDPHE still open or has that passed?
That is a good question. I believe that has passed because they're going through their process already. But that is probably best directed to CDHPE because they go off of their own calendar. I do know that they have sent us our comments and we're responding to those comments.
And for the sake of folks who may not be acronym, please tell us what CDPHE stands for? And if we don't have the answer to that question, I would respectfully ask that you and Griselda find, find out the answer.
Yes, sir. So CDHPE is Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. They're the state regulators. We can actually go in and find out that information and we'll post that on our website. But I don't know their schedule off the top of my head, but I do.
What is their role in, what is their role in the permitting process? I know a lot of folks know this, but some folks may not know this. Why is CDPHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, important in terms of approving whatever permits they need to approve?
That's a good question, Commissioner. So they are a regulator. They are the state's regulator with anything associated with landfills. They oversee the landfills to make sure that we are following all the state and regulatory guidelines, state and federal. So basically, they are the watchdog that oversees us. If we are in violation of anything according to the regulations, they could find us. They could shut us down. They could, they pretty much have a lot of power over us. That's the entity that we have to heed to, to make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
Lou, have they approved this Wellington site?
That's part of, that's what the EDOP is involved with. First, it goes through engineering and technical review. And then they give comment to the site. They haven't objected to the site and the comments that we have seen are more technical associated with the operations. I haven't seen any comment that says this is not a foreseeable site. So I think we've already passed some of the regulatory overview that this is a site that is dealable for what we're looking to do. And remember, there's also another process. The county also has to approve that with the CD certificate designation process. The county also has to give us the okay to do that. And that's, you know, Laramie County could come back to us and say, no, we don't think this is a good site or this is not the best thing. So this is all part of the permit process.
And so far, there have been no indications that that, that is happening. In terms of community relations, I think people are asking because they want to know, is this still up for discussion?
So as far as the site, the state has not come back to us and said, this is an unusable site. That is something that we did not see in the comments. Everything that we have gone through with environmental overview for the site has passed, has pretty much said, yep, check, we passed this. Yes, we have that. So we've did a lot of legwork relative to the aspects of the site. Is this a dealable site for landfill application? So far, everything has passed. And we are just getting into the technical nitty gritty of a landfill design and operation. That's, that's the stage that we're at right now with CDHPE.
Lou, can I just ask, I want to, I want to verify that EDOP, an acronym you said earlier, that means Environmental Design and Operating Plan, correct?
Engineering.
Engineering.
Design, Operating Plan, EDOP.
Thank you so much.
That's, that's the permit, that, that's the official name of that permit that we're getting with CDHPE. Sorry, I use a lot of acronyms in this.
That's okay. So next question, can we jump to our next question?
Please.
Jennifer asks, I'm curious how long the other landfill in Laramie County has been used? Is it seventy-five years old?
That landfill was built in nineteen sixty-three. It is fifty-seven years old. And it has probably about, we're targeting twenty-twenty-four for closing it. That's when we will officially run out of airspace for that permit. And we have no plans to expand it. So landfills often sometimes go through an expansion process too before they close. But our plans are to close that landfill and to open up a new one.
Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I've heard previously from different solid waste officials that not only do we not have plans for, for closing, but the state has told us that we cannot expand.
That is correct.
Correct? Okay.
That is correct.
It's not like it's an option to expand. The state has said you cannot expand anymore at that site.
Yeah. And if I could add to that, that's a great question, Michelle, if I could add to that. So that landfill was built back in nineteen sixty-three before the RICDA and Subtitle D regulations are in place. It's an unlined landfill. And we were grandfathered in to continue operations. But you couldn't open a landfill like that today because it's not meeting all the regulatory requirements for operating a safe landfill. For that reason, it makes sense for us to go ahead and just move forward with the closure of that landfill.
Great, thank you, Lou. Okay, next question comes from Karen. Karen asks, what can we expect for sounds from machinery and trucks and smells?
That's great. So the smells, I covered a little bit of that earlier. Part of the landfill practice is to cover all the material. At the end of the day, so we do not leave material uncovered. And that will actually help to mitigate any of those smells. If you come to our landfill today, if you come to our gate, you don't smell anything. There's not this overarching odor, this cloud of odor that seminates from the landfill. We have neighbors within a short distance of our current landfill. We've been operating for years, decades with neighbors all around us. And we haven't had any strong complaints about odors or anything of that nature. We haven't been cited by CDHPE or any regulatory agencies for odors or problems with environmental issues with pollution as far as debris flying around or odors of the area. As far as sounds, the biggest sounds and noise actually comes from the equipment. So every time a front loader or bulldozer or scraper or compactor backs up, it usually has that beeping sound, that large beeping sound. So there's new technology out there. There's backup alarms that are called whisper alarms. They actually have this whispering kind of, it's like a, a air noise. And it's something that's used now in the industry. And this is what we're planning to put on the equipment. We're also putting that on with the new transfer station in order to mitigate that beep, beep, beep that you could often hear for a mile away. And that's where the biggest noise will come from is actually the yellow iron. You will have regular trucks just rolling in and out. But it will be, the noise will be to a minimum as much as we can control that.
Thanks, Lou. Okay, next question comes from Lauren. Lauren asks, can we shut down for wind? Sorry, let me try this again. Can the shutdown for wind be implemented at thirty miles per hour sustained wind?
We are following what the state guidelines are telling us, and that's the regulatory guidelines for forty miles an hour. So right now, we don't have any plans to go below that.
And then, okay, next question. How close is any residential development, Ben asked, Ben asked, he asked?
So there are some homes to the south of the landfill relatively at the end of the property across the street. As you, you could do a Google map search and see what is in that area. And you could see there are some homes within, as soon as you leave the property, probably within several hundred feet of the borderline of the property.
But to be clear, Lou, our, the property here is how many acres?
Oh, it's about a three-hundred acre site. And we're developing, so this area here is, is, the first cell is only about a hundred and twenty acres. And the other cell is a little smaller.
And Lou, just to follow up with Griselda's comment and the question regarding easements, I've, I've read in the information, we're talking about twenty-five foot easements with Birmingham. I think when you've had some of your community meetings with folks up in the north, it's been suggested that, and I know it's tricky because of the, the water issues, but landscaping and perhaps adjusting that, that twenty-five foot easement to create more of a, a barrier between, you know, the landfill operations and, you know, residential. Can you please speak to that? Is that something we can adjust? Can we put trees or that can handle the low water trees or, or shrubs or something? You know, when you go out to the alt, you know, the, the alt site that, that waste management operates, they've attempted to put some type of conifers, you know, along the highway fourteen there. Are we going to be doing stuff like that?
We haven't gotten that far in our development. It's still open, Commissioner. We haven't, we don't have a landscaping plan already developed for the site as we're doing. And it's not required for the EDOP. That will get more detailed out as, once we get our permit and we get to the next phase of design, we can detail a landscaping plan because that becomes part of the CD process. Part of the CD process requires a landscaping plan. So right now, it's still open. That suggestion has been made and we're looking into that. The problem that I see with trees is that we don't have any kind of irrigation system out there. We would have to pipe something in, in order to put trees up. And the other aspect is the, is the wind. With the wind up there, you don't have a lot of trees in that area because also because of the high winds. So we will have to look at the natural elements that are out there and put something that's cohesive to the environment. You don't want to bring anything non-native to that area as well. Can we do a more of a zero escape kind of plan? I, I would certainly be in favor of that because we also have to be cognizant of the water. We don't have a lot of water up there. And to put in vegetation that is not conducive to that particular environment will now also drain, will require a tremendous amount of water. And we would have to design a special capacity just for that.
Yeah, and I understand there are challenges. I'm just asking that we be as open as possible and creative as possible. Because I think that it's a, it's a valid concern of the neighbors that we need to make sure that we're limiting the visibility of the operations that I guess will occur now in the northwest. I think it's also important to acknowledge that in response to community suggestions, I think the original entrance to the landfill was, I think, on the south side. And we did respond, you know, we did respond to concerns. And that's why I believe the entrance now will be on the, in the northwest or northeast quadrant of the, of the property. Is that correct?
That is correct. Griselda, maybe since you have the controls there, if you could show me a pointer where the original entrance was. It was mostly on the southeast corner, just a little bit north, the other, go to the right. There you go. That's, now just go up just a little bit. So the original entrance was right around there. And that was part of our initial plan. We have since, in the last several months, moved it up north. So it's up there now. So that's going to be our main entrance for the landfill. And a lot of that, when we met with the community back in November, I remember having this meeting. That was a suggestion that was made to me. And we went back and looked at it and looked at the practicality of it and seeing how would that affect anything within our operations? And we said, no, you know, that's something that we could do. And particularly since we're starting to the north, that kind of makes sense. So a heed to the community's concerns, we actually went ahead and did that. So getting back to your original question, Commissioner, I would say the book is open on the landscaping. We haven't said no trees or we will have trees. It's something that we're going to look at and obviously put in something that is pleasing to the community. Obviously, we don't want to just put anything out there.
Yeah.
And, and we will take their concerns and their suggestions. I think we'll work with an architect to develop something. And as we have plans, we could certainly start putting these out to the community and open it up a comment. Absolutely.
And, and, and given that the folks who live up there live in relation to the land, I would think that they have very specific suggestions on what would be appropriate low water use native vegetation. I think, Michelle, we have at least a number of questions in the, in the queue. And I wanted to make sure we get through those, you know, being mindful of the time and, and still even a couple of minutes at, at the end for wrap up. Thank you, Lou and Griselda, you're doing a great job.
Sure.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're getting to folks' questions.
We have a couple of questions about water, which I think is a good follow-up to what you were just talking about. So I'm going to ask both of them and maybe you can answer them in one answer. So the first question is, what is your source of irrigation for fire and dust control? So the water for that. And then second, related to that, will this new location impact? And then second, related to that, will this new location impact on Wellington's water supply? Will the site be drying potable water from town?
So the answer to that is, we already have on the south boundary line of the property. So if you go, if you just draw a straight line south, right along Route 70 here, I'm sorry, County Road 70, there is a water line there that we have already a couple of taps in place. We only have about two, three taps, I believe, three quarter inch taps. We already have that designated for water. But our main water source will be in the north. We are planning to drill for a very deep well as one of our key sources for water. So this is a well that's going to be probably about 1,000 feet deep. We're going for some of the deeper aquifers in order to get the right amount of GPM gallons per minute that we're going to need for our cell and our construction development. And we're planning to use that as our primary source for construction of the cells. We're going to have a water truck there on site that will go along the roads. And as construction takes place, it will miss and it has a water canyon. This is what we use at our current landfill right now. So that's what we're going to use for water control. So we have two sources for water. We do have some city water that's, it's not huge, that's not our primary. Those are just taps that are already in place. But our main source is going to come from a deep aquifer.
Great, thank you Lou. So kind of changing direction here to infrastructure. The closest intersection is County Road 70 and County Road 9. The locals call this Dead Man's Hill because of several car accidents with deaths. Is there a plan to add a four-way stop sign or a light for the increased traffic?
Yes, thank you Michelle. I'm glad you brought up the traffic because I realize that that is a major concern for the community. We've heard that time and time again, almost every meeting that we've had. Here's where we are. So county engineering, our county engineering department, Mark Peterson, is in charge of the development of the road from, so Al Canyon Road from I-70 leading to Route 9. That, the county already has plans to develop and reconstruct that whole road. And I'd actually met with Mark just a couple of days ago and his team. And they are already kicking off the development, the investigation work that's needed for the development of that whole stretch. It's not just the intersection, they're developing that whole stretch. And a big part of that is going to be that intersection. So they are looking at, they're conducting studies right now. And they're looking at the truck traffic, how much truck traffic is going to be going up there? What is the usage? What is the frequency? They've hired a traffic engineer, a consultant to come in. And I'm actually working with them right now because I'm providing them all the information that's needed for the amount of traffic that we're estimating that's going to be up there. So they're looking at that particular intersection and what would be the best thing for that intersection? And also that hill coming down? Now, that hill may get augmented, I don't know off the top of my head. The study is going in process right now and it'll take several months. I just got a Gantt chart from their engineering department that shows that progress of what they're doing. And they're going to be evaluating that whole stretch of road for the next several months, conducting all kinds of traffic studies and analysis and looking at that intersection. Now whether it'll be a stop sign, whether there'll be a light, whether there'll be a roundabout, I don't know. That is going to be determined by the county engineering department and the traffic engineers that are studying this particular aspect. So they are in the process of doing that right now. I'm thinking at about the September, maybe October, the study and all the research will be completed. And it will start on their preliminary design work. And I'm hoping that by the middle of next year, probably around this time next year, we'll have some more detailed information of what that intersection is going to look like. And what is Al Canyon going to look like from that intersection all the way to I-70? So that is being reviewed right now, which is actually a perfect opportunity too, to get community input of what they would like to see in that intersection. And that's one of the things that I mentioned in the previous meeting. We haven't decided, there isn't a finite decision today of what that intersection is going to look like. That is actually taking place. So this is a great opportunity to receive the community input. So we could send that up and start engaging engineering and the developers that are putting that in place. So that's where we're at right now with that intersection. They understand there is tremendous concerns. And we're going to be looking at all the truck traffic associated with that and we'll put them. I know that they're taking safety as one of the main precautions in there. So it's not going to stay the way it is, that I know.
Lou, what's the deal, what's the deal with, I understand that another, I mean, there are different routes to try to address some of the traffic concerns. I think it's been suggested that perhaps trucks come off of the Buckeye exit. Could you speak to that? I can't really visualize how that would work. Would you please address that, sir?
So, yes sir. So we did a preliminary, the county traffic engineers did a preliminary analysis and looked at various routes. There was a route using I-25. There was another route looking, coming up just Taft Hill and then heading to Al Canyon and then heading east. And they looked at all the major routes of how to get from our transfer station to the new landfill. The traffic engineers said the primary route, the best route based on their study, was leaving our site, coming up I-25, getting off at Al Canyon and then heading north on Route 9. That is the route that we are looking at as the primary route. But that's just one suggestion. It's not set in stone. It's not the route that we're saying this is the only route that we're using. This is part of the study, what they're going to do Commissioner. Once they get a good feel for the amount of truck traffic, not only ours, but the route trucks, that's the thing that we need to study right now. Because we don't have information of what the private sector haulers are going to be doing. So we could control the 30, 40 trucks that are coming out of our transfer station. But to the north, there's also going to be a bunch of collection trucks, that we call them route trucks. This is the garbage trucks that go around, that go to the neighborhoods and pick up from residential and commercial. We're going to conduct a study to just take a feel and get an idea of how many of that truck traffic could potentially come to the new landfill. That is private business that we cannot regulate. We could suggest to them where, what we would like to see. We could put in our ordinance and say we would like from one area point, for example, we just off the top of my head, if we use Douglas Road, we could suggest to the hauling community that anything north of Douglas Road should come to the transfer station. Anything south, I'm sorry, anything north of Douglas Road should go to the landfill. Anything south of Douglas Road should go to the transfer station. This is just a suggestion Commissioner to give a point of reference. But we're going to be looking at the hauling areas and what potentially the traffic is going to look like from the private businesses that do haul and come to that landfill. And that is all going to get put together as part of the traffic study for us to evaluate. So long-winded answer, but right now, based on the information that they need to research a little bit more, we don't have a designated route. We have some suggestions and some ideas, but there's nothing in setting criteria.
There are a couple more questions, so we definitely need to get to them. But the bottom line is that we will have answers to the traffic engineering, you know, based on the traffic engineering studies. And we will have very specific protocols for, you know, trucks coming from the south. And the reason that we can, we can have some control over the trucks that are bringing material from the transfer station on Taft Hill, southwest of, or Collins, up to the proposed landfill site is because those trucks, those 30 to 40 trucks will be ones that we contract with to deliver that material. The commercial haulers will be dropping stuff off at the transfer station. And then folks to the north, as you indicated, sir, they'll be dropping off stuff at the new landfill site. But is, okay.
You got it, you got it correct. That's exactly.
Before we move on really quickly, I just want to say that it's a major community concern. This proposed, all of our traffic going down County Road 9 where most of our housing is. So going back to Buckeye, one of the suggestions was diverting traffic straight up and having them come out on Buckeye to the north to avoid some of our transfer trucks coming here. So that's been a suggestion. Something else in one of the questions is, have we considered County Road 80 where there's much less traffic? So just some of these ideas that our public is giving us, we are looking at all these things and we are going to be sharing them with the engineers.
That is correct. Thank you for bringing that up. So yeah, the jury's still open in a nutshell.
Awesome. So we have about three questions, so maybe we can do lightning round with these three questions. I think you'll be able to answer them in a pretty short amount anyway. So we'll lightning round this one. First question, and I don't know what this means, hopefully you do. Will E and P waste be accepted?
No. So E and P waste is coming from oil sites. That is waste that comes from fracking from oil sites. It's highly contaminated. Some landfills here in Colorado are taking that, that is not in our permit.
What does it stand for? What does E and P stand for?
Oh, that's a good question.
Someone just, let me, I put it live in the answers. Someone just answered it. Exploration and production. Jill knew, Jill knew the answer, good job Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, next question. And she also says it's strictly regulated in Colorado. So next question, is there a plan to open this site for residential use when the Taft Hill landfill closes?
No, we are not opening this site currently. Our plans is not to open it for residential. We do have drop-off sites in Wellington, so our satellite drop-off sites, convenience centers will still be open for residents.
Awesome. Final question that I have right now. Which political entity picks a landfill site? And maybe, maybe it should be rephrased as which governmental entity picks a landfill site?
This site was originally picked out by the solid waste department. I think they did a lot of research in that. And then it was finally approved by the commissioners as far as for Laramie County. So Laramie County went through the process and the commissioners finally gave the okay to use this site.
And I believe it's property that the county owned.
Yes, sir.
And that's an important factor. Yeah.
So Commissioner and Lou, I don't have any other questions right now. And I don't necessarily have anyone with their hand raised. So Commissioner, at this point, I throw it back to you and see what you want to do. If you want to give Lou and Griselda a chance to wrap up? Or what do you want to do?
Thank, thanks Michelle. Yeah, I'd like to give them a chance to wrap up. But before we do that, when there was a reference to the residents and where they, you know, if they live in Wellington, for example, can they drop off their trash at the new, the proposed new facility? And rightfully so, of course. Lou indicated there would be a place in town, some kind of facility there. But also, isn't it correct, we will have something in town as we currently have for recycling? I just want to make sure that folks know that they still have options for recycling and that that's an important component of this whole waste shed coalition effort. And that is to try to achieve at least 40% diversion so that we can extend the life of the new landfill. So that's important. And the only other, and then you could speak to that if you guys want. But the only other comment I wanted to make is I saw in the, either in the chat or the Q and A, reminded that two of the Wellington Town Trustees, Rebecca, Rebecca Kinney and Tim Whitehouse, they are part of the Solid Waste Policy Council. And there is a whole governance structure that is set up. I don't know if we really got into that much. I don't know if you guys want to speak to that briefly. But we do have representation from the various municipalities and towns in the, in Laramie County. And this is basically how we provide guidance. And there's also a technical advisory committee where there are folks who are experts and knowledgeable about these issues who address some of the technical aspects. Our next meeting, I believe, is next Thursday, October 8th. And maybe Lou or Griselda could speak to that. It is a virtual meeting. I believe it's a, well, it has to be a public meeting. So that's another way for folks to get information. That's all I have to say. I'll turn it back over to our solid waste folks.
Great, thank you Commissioner. So just to wrap it up, yes, there is other aspects where the county could get involved as well as the community could get involved. So the PAC, the Political Action Committee, was developed as part of the waste shed. The waste shed was this big project to not only, let's not only look at landfill, what we need, but let's look at our solid waste. And our goal at the solid waste department is not just to take everything and throw it into a landfill. We do have diversion. We do have some big diversion projects that we are also developing. This is just, the need of the landfill is important right now because of the fact that we have one closing. And if we don't go forward with this operation, then we would be forced to go to alternative landfills that are much further and the rates will go up dramatically, significantly. So that's a big reason why this landfill is also taking big presidents right now. It's kind of the focus. And the PAC oversees a lot of the aspects associated with the waste shed. And they're giving a lot of input as far as to the commissioners of what they would like to see from the community development. So the commissioner is correct. There's a lot of voices out there. This is not just something that solid waste department is just growing legs and just running with. We do get a lot of input from all our partners, the town of Wellington, Fort Collins and Loveland, as well as Estes Parks, which is part of our intergovernment agreement. This is all the group association. And we, we take into accord all the voices from the community as part of our development. I don't have anything else major to share. Griselda, do you have any, maybe some of the other questions?
There's one more question.
I was going to jump in. We do have one person who has their hand raised. So we're going to, Richard Seaworth has his hand raised. So Richard, you're going to have to unmute yourself now. I've given you permissions to talk and the unmute button should be in the bottom left-hand corner. There you go, you should be able to talk.
Okay, thank you. John, I want to make sure you understand, you started this project and I own three corners of 9 and 70. And your engineers were out two weeks ago. I stopped and talked to them. They said they would respect our property, they would respect our farming operation, they would not come into our fields very far. Next thing I know, they're driving steel stakes in the middle of my field over a half a mile away from your easement. They did this in three spots. I had to tear one out and stop my farming operation. I am not going to tolerate that. You have got to respect our private property and that just can't happen. So now we're at big odds over this. So you just created yourself a problem that did not have to happen. So I would really appreciate you getting on your engineering people and not have them lie to me about what they're going to do.
Richard, thank you for that input. I'm sorry that that occurred. I, I'm not aware of the details. But certainly, absolutely, we will follow up with our county engineering people to find out, you know, what happened and why it happened. And to make sure that if they're going to go on private property, they need permission from the property owners. I also appreciate that, you know, the farming operations that you have up there, sir. And I know that brings up another issue that's been brought up in the past that I want to make sure these folks are, you know, is on the list of issues. And that is that in terms of the, the traffic related issues, I know that there are times when there's harvesting, for example, of sugar beets. And so there's a lot more truck traffic, I think, on County Road 9 and going across Al Canyon Road. So we, I know we're aware of that, but we need to figure out how do we address that problem? So you don't have all these trucks, you know, backing up with each others. But Richard, we'll follow up and Michelle, let's make sure that we have.
I did pick up some stuff, John.
Yes, sir.
I would be more than happy to bring down and show you what they were driving in our fields and why this happened. And I wouldn't have been so upset had they talked to me, been fine. But they promised me they wouldn't. And I'm ready, and it's kind of like, this gentleman today is the first person that said that's where the dump's going to go. For the last 10 years, we've come to these meetings. For the last 10 years, we've come to these meetings and we've been told it's not going to happen. And so now you want to do this, which we all knew that was a lie before. So now we just know for sure it was a lie. So I would really appreciate you, because we're not going to tolerate this. I will call 911 from now on.
Thank you, Richard. And Michelle, let's make sure we get some answers to this concern. And then let me know and I can respond to Richard directly.
I got it down.
And we can have the county engineer, Mark Peterson or whoever, make sure that we're responding directly to Mr. Seaworth. Well, I don't know, Griselda, do you have anything to close us out on a, on a more positive note, perhaps?
Well, we definitely want to hear your concerns. We don't want you to be upset. We want to work with you. So I think one of the best things that one of our neighbors said out there, Mr. Kevin Olson, is that he wants to make sure this project moves forward in the best neighborly way possible and that we can be great neighbors and coexist. And I said, that's exactly what we want. So we want to be able to work with you, hear your concerns. Even if they're hard for us to hear, we need to address them and we want to. So, so let us know immediately when something happens. Like I said, I think Michelle put all of my contact information out there. So send them right to me and I will get them to where they need to be so they can get addressed immediately. Because we don't want to be bad neighbors. And so I just want to end it with that. Moving forward, we really want to be proactive and be, and be a good neighbor.
Thank you, Griselda. And in closing, again, I'm always grateful that folks take the time. We have, you know, Wellington has a high stake in this thing that we do this right. And certainly the folks who live in the surrounding rural areas. And if there is a need to do any additional outreach outside of these community conversations, I'm certainly open to that. I know these folks are open to that. You know, we have, again, at least two of the, two of the Wellington Town Trustees, Rebecca and Tim are part of that policy advisory council. And they'll be participating in the meeting next Thursday. Yeah, we need to get this right. And as far as decisions made about this location, I mean, the current landfill is going to fill up. And we need to figure out a way to deal with our trash in Laramie County. We need to figure out a way to have less trash in Laramie County. And that's why this whole Northern Colorado Waste Shed Coalition came about. And ultimately it evolved into where we are, you know, where we are today. With that said, please, please take care of yourselves, have a wonderful day. Make sure you make informed decisions, vote early. And then you'll probably start, stop getting phone calls or anything like that. Take care.
Thanks, goodbye, everyone.
Thank you, Michelle, thank you, Griselda.
Thank you.